Right.
Doesn't matter. You call it. Don't worry.
I'd like to call the order, the special meeting for the Mass Level Board of Education for April 25th, 2012, at 6:00 PM. We please stand for the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vacarrelli will call, please.
Jaclyn Asville?
Here.
Jay Fabian?
Here.
Michelle Hayes?
Here.
Rex Ryder?
Here.
Teresa Ward?
Here.
We've got a motion for item four, approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Vacarrelli.
Jaclyn Asville?
Yes.
Jay Fabian?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Rex Ryder?
Yes.
Teresa Ward?
Yes.
We'll move to item five, discussion of levy options, and we'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Gotti and Mr. Vacarrelli.
Again, all we did was, we pulled together the information after last night's discussion. We shared with you four mil last night, we shared with you continuing, we shared with you a six mil last night, continuing, we shared with you an eight mil continuing last night, we shared with you a combined four mil and .90 mil continuing operating and continuing permanent improvement. You requested some data from us, or a three point nine mil continuing and .5 permanent improvement, and you asked us for a five, what a five point nine mil would look like with the caveat of the bus drivers being hired by the school district as opposed to being contracted. And again, we talked about that last night, that that would be, it can't be until act this contract would end, so we did talk about that. And the other thing we talked about is the figures that Mike had shared last night, would them come in at a zero step, and they would be, again, we'd have to employ new people because technically we don't have any right now.
And two teachers.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Michelle. And restoring Woods and...
And our consumer side.
And our consumer side. Those are caveats, so we're asked as part of the five point nine. And the five point nine was just continuous levy, correct?
Right, and it would also balance us for two years plus give us money towards the third year.
That is correct. Yep. Yep, those are, those are, we have the numbers, Mike has the numbers.
Yeah, just briefly, the three point nine leaves us with, for all intents and purposes, zero balances for 2013, which is next year, 2014, which is the year after. Turns out to be a negative $110 and a negative $2,332, so that's zero. And then we still have deficits in '15 and '16 that we would have to address. The three point nine plus the half mil permanent improvement, the answer is roughly the same, except we took a stab at how much permanent improvement money could be used to relieve some of the general fund expenditures. Really, there's no sure way to project that. I mean, we could look back a number of years, but since we don't spend a whole lot on capital type items, there really wouldn't be a whole lot of relief to the general fund, so the numbers are roughly the same. The balances become positive to about $12,000 and $35,000 for the first two years, and then still considerably negative for the last two. And the final...
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
So, the three point nine and the four point four will balance us through the 2012?
2014.
It will balance us through 2014?
Yes, with, as long as there's no change in funding, there's no additional special aid kids moving in, I mean, those are your big ticket items, because we have zero money.
And the difference between the two is the three point nine is just to bounce the budget. The three point nine plus the .5, what we would have, just like we have an ongoing permanent improvement for the buses to make sure that we can buy new buses periodically, it would be to help do some of the permanent improvement things and could be used to help some of the facilities our community uses.
Yes.
After hours, helping them in better condition than they are right now.
Yeah, and the other thing we would do is instead of buying textbooks out of the general fund and hitting that with the expenditure, we would buy them out of the permanent improvement. So therefore, you're relieving the general fund of some expenditures. Problem is, we don't spend a lot of money on textbooks.
Or...
And if we're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars a year on that and computers, that's, you know, to move major expenditures out, those are allowable under a PI line.
What's the, what's the comfortable rule of thumb of how much carryover you should have to make it through the rest of the summer?
You want 30 days cash balance.
Okay.
And our lowest, for us, would be $2 million.
And keep in mind, this is assuming, the assumption built in here is 700, the deficit for 2012 is reduced from 200, from 100, from 1.6 million to 700,000.
Right, we would still have to do a number of cuts.
On the same page. And that's, some of those things are contingent upon negotiation, some of those things we are controllable.
Correct.
Some of the things we talked about in executive session. I just want to make sure that's in there.
Yeah, that is important. It doesn't bring anything back, but what it does allow us to do is hopefully stop cutting for two years, because we've done cuts for three years. Well, stop cutting except for those that we've discussed, starting next year.
So we would still have to cut what we've discussed?
The things we discussed in the executive session?
Yes.
Which is minimal imperative, but we will have to cut should we not do anything?
It's basically 900,000 in reductions, because it takes the, it takes the 1.6 million deficit down to something...
Okay, I must have missed something, and I can't clarify it right now, obviously, but...
Am I going to walk through the things individually? Two teachers.
Yeah, I think it's probably a question that needs to be clarified in the executive session. Right, right.
We went through the 1.6 and we kept subtracting till we got top two.
Down to about 700,000.
Everything that we talked about last night was based on that still moving forward. Okay, so you haven't been aware of that.
But we couldn't get, but we couldn't find any more for that 700,000. There's other things we could probably go after, but we thought it would be dramatic, dramatic impact to the district.
Do you want to go ahead and keep going with the numbers? Yeah.
The last one would be 5.4 mil operating levy and the half mil permanent improvement levy, and in 2014 and beyond, bringing back the busing and bringing back two teachers. That allowed us a, an ending fund balance at the end of next year of 290,000 roughly, and the end of 2014, a little less than 500,000, but 2015, we're back to a negative of about 112,000.
And is that what's making the cuts still?
That all, everything we've talked about so far, including the eight mil levy, started with a $700,000 deficit, meaning bringing it from 1.6 down to 700,000.
What is the balance of second year?
About 500,000, a little less.
So, I have all kinds of things here. I have any kind of...
Well, we kind of talked about them for hours last night. I'm not sure if there's anything new we're going to say.
Between 4.4...
So what's the board's pleasure?
Well, someone has to make a motion for whichever one they want. I make a motion for the 5.9?
No, straight 5.9 or 5.4 and .5, like you just said.
5.4, 5.4 and .5, like we had...
Well, good, that's a combined.
$20.
For 50,000.
Have a second?
I'll say.
Comments, questions, discussion?
So, it turns out you're saying...
For 50,000.
Anyone?
I just want to run record as saying, I have a hard time voting for an issue that has a caveat of bringing back busing, as I think they're two completely separate issues, and I think it's inappropriate to use one to levy the other, to get what we want, or what some of us want, I won't say maybe, but, you know, I just, I think that it's manipulating the system a little bit, and I can't, happy to have the conversation, happy to have the conversation, I think it's inappropriate to basically say, if you want me to support this levy, you will bring the bus drivers back. I think, as I expressed last night, I think that is highly inappropriate conduct of a school member, and I will not support that. I'm not saying I won't have a conversation about the bus drivers and about having them report to us, I just think it's a separate issue, I think it's inappropriate to try to push them together to, to get what one or two board members want. So, I just wanted to run record as saying, that's why I would be voting on this issue.
Well, I think it would be financially wrong for us not to discuss it, to put it on there, because in a year, you're going to have to make a decision. And if we don't, if we don't have that added into the levy, what are we going to do in a year when we have to either sell the buses to a private company, or we're going to have to bring the buses back? It's going to be one of the two. You're going to need the money to do it.
Well, but first of all, add...
If we... Did you look into that?
Okay, but, yeah, okay, but add, you said added in, I don't know if you meant added in.
It's not, there's no additional money in that that's going to pay for bus drivers.
No, that's what I'm saying, we're going to be sitting here in a year, saying, what are we going to do?
No, but last night they...
We just started talking, we just talked about that. There is no additional funds wrapped into that to pay for bus drivers.
Okay, but last night, you were very clear in that you would only support, and you were, and the one that came up for this...
You wanted my support.
One, you would only support the motion, the levy, that's going to have enough money in it to bring back the bus drivers, and the only way you would support it, we did promise you to bring back the bus drivers.
Now, wait a minute.
That is what you're saying.
Hold on just a second now.
Time anything, to time anything to its end.
There is no additional...
Do we have one conversation, please?
There is no additional money packed in there that's going to pay for our bus drivers.
So you're...
There is no additional money in there.
Okay, but yet you want us to promise you that we'll do it without having the funding to do with that. So it's just not well thought through.
Okay, and you're wanting me to support something to pay for community ball fields? Is that not what you stated?
No, what I stated was that we could do something, and that's what the .5 is in years too, basically...
A vice for permanent improvements, and which we need.
We talked about another kind of...
Now, I don't have any intention of it going to community ball fields, because if we bring in money that comes into Madison School District, it needs to stay with Madison School District.
Okay, I said for community use, so that more of the...
Last night you said community ball fields.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I really wish you'd listen. What I'm, what I'm saying is...
I wish you would listen.
What I'm saying is, it could be used for community purposes, because without having some of these funds, we're talking about having to close the doors as soon as school gets over, no one's out in the building, and then all of a sudden, the buildings and the fields and everything, this community pays from their taxes and enjoys right now, they won't have access to, and I don't think that's fair. So, right now, we're talking about 5.4 and the 5, which includes a promise to Michelle and Teresa, well, maybe not, maybe I won't tag anyone that, at least, promise to Michelle, a promise to Michelle, that we will bring back the bus drivers.
We will hire our old drivers.
And we haven't even thought through whether or not that would be a good decision financially for this district, and I think it's inappropriate to try to manipulate what we need to run the academic, enact the programs in our school system, so that you can have, have Madison bus drivers back. I just, I think it screams a personal agenda, and I won't support it. And I just wanted to go on record, that's my opinion, I'm entitled to it.
Absolutely.
And let's vote, I call a question.
And I cannot, and I can't say anything to that.
Can we have the question called?
I'd like the question withdrawn.
I, I, I think you have to vote on calling of the question, I think that is what, if somebody calls the question, the proper thing is, it's a motion that supersedes what's on the floor, anything on the floor, is that correct? I'm 90% certain it supersedes, but they're not supposed to vote on the calling of the question.
Okay, I motion to call the question, I think I need a second then we vote.
You need a second.
Second.
Hold on.
So we have to have a vote on that?
Yes.
So if you're for the motion, who's standing by, are you saying yes?
To take the vote for the 5.4 plus the 5.
To make the end of the conversation, so that no one else can respond to Jaclyn's statement, we talked about it two hours last night.
Mr. Vacarrelli?
Jay Fabian?
Yes, if you wanted, or no, for a call to question. Call for the question, yes.
Michelle Hayes?
No.
Rex Ryder?
Yes.
Teresa Ward?
No, 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 what the heck we're talking about.
Jaclyn Asville?
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Vacarrelli?
This is for the 5.4 plus .5, correct?
5.4 continuing, operating, plus .5 permanent continuing, combined levy.
Okay.
Yes. But with no other, other promises or anything like that? Well, it would include...
This is one includes the buses.
It would include, this would include...
And the two teachers.
Well, and the two teachers, my assumption would be that it would include that.
Well, all I have to say is lose with that, if we do, we need something.
We have a motion on the floor, and now, discussion is over. Mr. Vacarrelli?
Is that part of the resolution language?
It is not part of the resolution language, it was just a promise that had to be made in order to...
All right, so I'm going to call the vote on that. Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Rex Ryder?
No.
Teresa Ward?
Yes.
Jaclyn Asville?
No.
Jay Fabian?
No.
So that vote was two, three.
I make a motion to put the 3.9 plus the .5 percent with permanent improvement on the ballot in August.
Second.
We have a motion, comments, questions, discussion, honest motion?
Yeah, and I want to make sure, this is a 3.9 continuing operating and a .5 permanent improvement continuing, correct? I just want to make sure. Okay. Is that what I'm hearing?
With no caveats, we spend it, or we need to spend it in order to balance.
Okay, but I'm saying, that's what, I'm just asking a question for a moment, but that's the one you said would carry this out two years.
Yes.
This will get us where we get nothing back, that's where it goes.
Correct.
And we start to make initial cuts.
Yep.
This is the minimum that we can ask taxpayers in order to get by for the next two years until we have the next day budget.
Yeah, but I think if the teacher or something come back or paying extra, because on top of it, they're going to have to pay for the bond issue also in 2013.
Well, I would agree, but given what we will likely have to cut if nothing passes, I think the lowest money that we can ask for is going to be the easiest to pass and the most economically feasible for our community members, the taxpayers, and I look at the risk of what will happen to our academic programs in this district if we don't pass it. And although I would like to have more, and I would like to see more, and I'd like to take our student back, and I'd like to re-instill a lot of the programs we've cut over the past couple of years, I think it puts us at too great of risk of not passing anything.
I don't, I think people are going to want something.
I think it's the best for our taxpayers, it's the least amount possible, but yet still keeps our school system afloat. Likewise, I'm not completely happy with it, but it's the best we can do at this point.
I'm willing to recommend at that level, because it's going to be difficult to pass it. I don't know that we'll be able to pass this. Cut, on the other hand, I'm willing to work the buns off, whatever it takes.
I don't think we will. Call the question, unless we're ready to just, just move the meeting on.
Ready to vote?
Unless we're ready to vote anyway.
Mr. Vacarrelli?
Rex Ryder?
Yes.
Teresa Ward?
No.
Jaclyn Asville?
Yes.
Jay Fabian?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
No.
The vote is three, two.
We need a super majority on that, correct?
You need four votes on that.
I would like to...
Okay, well, let me, let me just ask something there, because, because we're short on time tonight, and this is really critical to this whole district. 5.9, obviously, we're not going to get through. 3.9, we're not going to get through. If we went 4.9, as we're in the middle, is that something that we could get people to vote to?
With no caveats, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to be held hostage for my vote for anything.
In any future board, it's a future board, even though we're on the board at this moment in time, any one of us could be off the board tomorrow, or within two weeks, or whatever. We're holding another future board at a decision that's not correct. Well, so I... Again, I understand the discussions we had last night, and I understand the discussions we've had over a period of time, and I understand the discussions we had tonight. I also understand our financial situation, and I also understand we have to open school in the fall, and, and this is, I mean, we're, we have a problem, like every other district around us has a problem, where we have to go back somehow to the voters, and, and, I mean, I'm just trying to be honest, we have to, we have to do something.
Well, I'll tell you right now, I'm not willing to change my, my vote or my wishes at this time. I cannot even get my board president to return my phone calls, so if we have any discussions about it, I am not willing to budge.
I'm not even going to comment on that. Move on.
I will make a motion for 4.9.
Second.
That's 4.9 slowly operating, or is that correct?
4.9 continuing levy.
And that's going to give the voters one, if they vote, yes, what are they going to get?
If we go to 4.9 continuing, it would obviously not give us as much as a 5.9, it would give us, while Mike is speaking, dollars. Carryover would be...
4.9, we'd actually have a carryover at the end of '13, about 185,000, and a little over half million in '14, and then '15, we go a little over 100,000. So 4.9 actually gets us three years out.
And we'll not bring any teachers back or any of that sort of thing?
No, but what it does is, it stops the cutting.
So we don't have to cut what we discussed last night?
No, we still have to do that.
But without additional revenue, we're going to have to cut another 700 this year.
No, I'm not... And again, it's like, it's like the Lakers' record in 1950 really means nothing. But if you look at our history, our levy history, and I see why, after going through our discussions of recent, we've had 4.9 levies a lot on the ballot, and actually, in 2010, a 4.9 for the finance district were approved, emergency renewal in '09, 4.9 passed, a 7.34 failed, 7.34 failed, a 4.9 in '05 passed for finance district, income tax failed, a 4.9 emergency renewal passed in '04, capital improvement passed one, a 4.9 financial district renewal passed in 2000, and emergency renewal of 4.9 in '99 passed. 4.9 seems to be a number in this district that, and again, I know the paper Jefferson went 11.9, I know Scharton's going 5.95. 5.95.
And in their article, they also promised too, in today's article, and I forgot to bring it, but when they put it in there, they also put, if we pass this levy, you know, we're going to give back this, 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 and this. So they're giving back something for the voters to pass it, which we're not giving anything. We're not going to give them anything.
Well, at 4.9...
Except for new cuts next year, that's all we're going to give them. Well, we're going to have cuts next year, starting beginning of the year, okay?
Well, and again, when you say cuts, it would be, wouldn't be reps, it would be natural attrition, the, what we talked about yesterday would not be reps.
Right.
And, and hopefully, hopefully, our unions buy into our situation, and, you know, we're in bargaining, and hopefully, they would be considerer of some things.
There were few reps in that list.
On the... Teachers side, they're not on the teachers side? Not on the teachers side.
No.
So for clarification, that's 4.9 without a PI, is that correct?
Just a straight 4.9. I think that's what you said, continuing.
And that's continuing?
4.9 continuing.
And that would give us a little bit of a balance to maybe, to do some things, not get crazy, but to do something. Just trying to, I'm trying to get to the thing where we do something.
And certainly...
And if the voters voted down, then we have a whole different set of circumstances, but, but I think, I certainly think we got to at least give the voters, and that's, my feeling is, we got to give the voters an opportunity to vote. And, and, I don't want to make cuts, I don't want to increase taxes, but at the end of the day, something's got to happen, because the problems that are on us aren't created by us. The problems that are on us are created by reductions at the state level that cut our revenue so badly that we got down to it. We were 42 less teachers after two years, we've shown that we can cut. I, I have no problem standing in front of people... Forty-two teachers and three administrators and four OC. Yep. And so, we've shown that we can tighten our belt, but we, it gets to a point where you can't squeeze any more blood out of the turtleneck. We have to do something.
4.9 without any caveats, is that correct?
And when does this have to be voted on before certain dates?
Yes, we are...
What's the date?
Well, the final drop dead for the second resolution, and I like...
Well, the first deadline is, it has to be to the county auditor by the 27th, so it's today, right, today is 25th? There's two deadlines with a...
And then with the second one.
So Friday would be today, right?
Today is Wednesday, right? But it has to be at the county auditor to be certified by that day.
And we can't, we don't have enough time, like, we can't meet tomorrow, because we can't, you have to have some hours between...
You could do, you could do it Friday morning.
So we have a motion on the floor for 4.9, where are we going with this?
And, and if you...
I, I made a motion for a 4.9 continuous with no caveats or promises to bring back any one particular unit, but to do the best we can.
Do we need to call a question, or can we vote?
If you're, if you're ready to vote, you can vote.
Mr. Vacarrelli?
Teresa Ward?
No.
Jaclyn Asville?
Yes.
Jay Fabian?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
No.
Rex Ryder?
Yes.
The vote is three, two.
And we needed a super majority for that, so I'm going to go ahead, and I believe the other one that we looked at was an emergency levy, I'm going to, I'm, make a proposal or make a motion to put a 4.9 emergency levy on the ballot in August?
So moved? Second. I mean, we'll tie it up. Okay, an emergency levy for how many years? Five years, 10 years? Because that...
One to eight.
You have, I think you have to...
Well, emergency levies, you pass for a dollar amount.
Oh, thank you.
And not mileage.
Thank you. Right, you're right.
So...
And isn't it a number of years, an emergency?
A number of years.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, what dollar amount is the 4.9 mileage that makes us a little bit more comfortable than the 3.9, but is still...
906,426 dollars. He's the, he's the official.
No, that's a, that's a half year.
That's a half year.
That's a half year. Let me see.
1,800,000, 812,000, 812,000.
Okay. 4.9, the dollar amount for a 4.9 that will be certified by the county auditor is based on 100% of the valuation, and that's different than when I forecast the revenue for real estate, I use the 96%, but what they're going to do is certify based on 100%, which is 385 million dollars.
385?
Yeah, so the 4.9 mil levy, the dollar amount you would put in the resolution would be 1,888,388 dollars.
Can we repeat that phrase?
1,888,388 dollars.
And that would equate to...
That, that's 4.9 mils.
All right, and how, how many, where does that balance us to?
What I say for the, the 4.9 mil continuing does the same thing, plus gets us through What I say for the, the 4.9 mil continuing does the same thing, it gets us through 2015.
Okay, I make a motion for 4.9 emergency at the 1.88 million or the 1,888,388 dollars for an emergency levy.
We need a length of time on that?
Need a length of time.
10 years?
That's, that's, yeah, I mean, I think it's most you go, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is that, I mean, I...
I think that's reasonable.
Is that the most reasonable way to go?
Yeah, they changed that, uh...
They used to be five, and then...
They changed it to ten, because they don't have to renew it, do renewals every...
10 years.
10 years.
So, so move.
Second, comments, questions, discussion?
So, 4.9, 1, 1,888, for 10 years.
Now, does that affect the next three years, Mike?
Yeah, that should get us with a very small balance through 2015, after we cut the 1.6 down to 700.
Still have to do all this.
Same as this.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay.
Comments?
But now, the difference, and again, I want to make sure everybody's on board with this, because the, the emergency levy, because it's declaring an emergency, you only need a majority vote, an emergency levy, so just know that.
I know, that's, that's why I...
Well, I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
The voters have to have a reason to vote on an issue.
We're getting used to it, it's been a couple of weeks.
Well, but I'm just telling you, that's why I don't want to be after the fact.
No, no, we're getting used to the conniving, we're, we're...
We're conniving to it.
Voters deserve to have a say, so, I call the question.
You call the question, we have to vote on that. Second, any question?
Second, I have a question.
Who seconded?
Jay.
Yes.
Jay Fabian?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
This is to call the question?
This is to call the question?
Yes.
Rex Reiger?
Yes.
Teresa Ward?
Yes.
Vote is 5 of 0. Now the vote. On the emergency for the dollar amount in 10 years.
Yes, an emergency.
Okay, Jay Fabian?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
No.
Rex Reiger?
Yes.
Teresa Ward?
No.
Jaclyn Asville?
Yes.
The vote is 3-0.
3-2.
3-2, the vote is 3-2.
Seems that way, though.
I'm going to have to listen to the minutes, make sure I got it right.
Okay, so 1,888,000, I lost the last... Thank you.
Do we have need for executive session?
I have no need for...
And with quid pro quo?
Second.
Mr. Baccarola?
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Rex Reiger?
Yes.
Teresa Ward?
Yes.
Jaclyn Asville?
Yes.
Jay Fabian?
Yes.
Vote is 5 of 0.
Hey, we're going to 5 of 0.